Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Chair of the Committee and representing the 4th District, Councilwoman Porter representing the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos representing the 14th District.
Preston Lewis.
Preston Lewis is representing the Office of the President. He's online. And we also have joining us Councilmember Glover representing the 13th District. This afternoon, we will have a hearing for LO-21-0015 Baltimore City Fire Department EMS stat and operations and LO-23-0041 Baltimore City Fire Department operations. And EMS stat and operations is for the purpose of requesting that the fire chief present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. And for the department's operations, it's for the purpose of inviting representatives of the department to discuss operations of the fire department, including apparatus, equipment, hiring, and safety. So I just want to, you know, this is the first time we're coming back since unfortunately the deaths of Rodney Pitts and Dylan Ronaldo, who unfortunately lost their lives in the line of duty. And I know we have all been having a tough time since those losses, and I appreciate the team here doing all that they can to figure out what's going on. I want to give Chief Wallace an opportunity to talk about what's going on, what we're looking into, and we can start off there.
Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, members of the committee. I am Chief James Wallace from Baltimore City Fire Department. I have with me today numerous members of my command staff, as we did for you in the last briefing. Excuse me, I'll have some opening remarks for you, and then as we progress through the slides, Assistant and Deputy Chiefs with areas of responsibility contained within the slide deck will speak out. With regard to changes and things that we know since that particular fire incident, what we have right now, I have five different investigations going on, three of which I've commissioned myself. The first investigation began with MOSH, and it was the following morning, Maryland Occupational Safety and Health. They're running their own independent investigation. Literally the day of the event, an investigation began surrounding cause determination. That was initially led by the Baltimore City Fire Department Fire Investigation Bureau. However, we requested through the arson task force process, if you will, additional resources to come in. They included mutual aid partners such as Howard and Anaromos County, as well as the Maryland State Fire Marshal's Office. And ultimately, we've brought in the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, who is now leading this investigation in conjunction with Deputy Chief Eames and Fire Investigation Bureau. So those are the first two. The third one that I asked for was NIOSH, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health. They are conducting ongoing investigations which involve fact finding from the incident scene itself, including the geography of the scene, weather conditions and the like, as well as objective interviews with personnel that were on the incident scene. We also have our own internal investigation that's happening. So I appointed a very well-respected battalion chief to lead the investigation, gave her the autonomy to select her committee. They too are objective, and a lot of what they're doing is paralleling what NIOSH is doing as well. So that's the fourth. And then the final one, I've asked the underwriter laboratories team to come in. They're located, this particular study group is located in Howard County. UL has the ability to research the incident scene and recreate that incident scene. So they will build props, they will build models and likenesses to the actual incident itself, taking in multiple factors, including the, again, the geography of the structure, but also weather conditions, strategies and tactics that were used at that time to model, and they'll produce it, it'll be open. They will reproduce that incident scene with their determination. So, you know, essentially speaking, we have a total of five. And my approach with this has been, above all else, transparent, but also very aggressive to, you know, shake out the facts and probably more importantly, make recommendations for our department, as well as any other departments who review these documents, establish best practices, future standards, and the like.
Thank you, Chief Wallace. I just want to say, you know, I know what that event meant to the department, and having one so soon after the previous one, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to learn. And I appreciate you immediately jumping to all the investigations that we can to figure out what's going on here, and if there's anything we could have or should have done differently. I appreciate this is a dangerous job from out the gate, and I think we all know and appreciate that. But certainly, we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that our firefighters, our heroes are going in, and they can be as safe as possible while doing so. So I appreciate you and look forward to those reports when they come out. Do we have at all a timeline for any of those, or any expected amount of time before we would hear back?
I don't have a solid or concrete timeline with that. My thought is right now that we're likely going to have cause determination come back to us first. That's just kind of in monitoring the progress of everything. It's my belief that that may be the first result that we get, if you will, which, you know, well, obviously, the other investigations will be well-positioned if that happens because they will build upon the evolution of the incident itself, knowing that initial cause determination. So, you know, can't promise that's what's going to happen, it's just a feeling that I have right now. What I will also add, in addition to the investigations, the last graduation class that went to the field numbered 18. So we had 18 cadets that graduated. What we did is instead of just releasing them to the field to ride as part of the standard crew, is we've added them to the complement of people that are already on the apparatus. So what does that look like? And I'll use one of our companies, Truck 16, for example. We had members that were being assigned to Truck 16 to fill vacancies, but what we did, instead of putting them into that vacant position, we added them as a fifth person to the shift. That gives us direct mentorship, not only from the company itself, but specifically from the company officer that they're going to be assigned to. That's happening for a total of 10 shifts, which equates to 240 hours of direct supervision. We did this for several reasons, I'll highlight the main, the most important reasons. In addition to those particular assignments, we've created a 360-degree internal evaluation, and we've done that through survey forms. So the candidate, at the end of this period, will have access to a survey form that they fill out, where they evaluate their own feelings of competency based on the additional instruction that they've had. They also have a chance to evaluate their progress through the Baltimore City Fire Department. It's all done by QR code, it's all confidential. They tap a QR code, they fill out the survey, they close it, and it goes to Chief Shiloh at the Fire Academy. Parallel to that is a similar survey, but it's done by the company officer. The company officer, through that amount of time, is positioned to be able to indicate what training's been done with them, as well as their own personal evaluations of the candidate. That is also sent back. So we're doing several things. We're giving them good one-on-one instruction in what the real world looks like, but we're also giving them, as well as the officer and evaluation, the officer, an opportunity to evaluate the process in totality. So we are still in that 10-shift period right now, but we will, obviously, we'll have data over the next few weeks to really, really, I think, position us to, you know, see if that's a feasible way of doing things going forward, but also to evaluate ourselves internally. I will say finally, preliminarily, from the field, it's been very well-received from companies, company officers in the field. They really feel like this was long overdue. So we're real happy to be working with them, the unions, for something here that we think is going to be a best practice for us.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I want to give us an opportunity to jump in the presentation, because I appreciate it's a pretty long one. I do want to make one more, maybe point or suggestion. I know from the last incident that we had, we did study and had a number of reports come out with recommendations, and I know it was the task of this committee to make sure we follow up and follow through on our progress in implementing those suggestions. So I, you know, encourage you, you know, for our next time when we do come back, to have some feedback on those reports and what we have been able to implement, so that, you know, as we're thinking about, you know, the meetings that will come after that, we can figure out how we can support you as a council, especially as the meeting after that will be happening right before the budget. So just want to kind of put that out there, and, you know, so we can all be on the same page.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll hand it off to you.
Chief, you can move forward. One more. So again, thank you for the opportunity to present to the committee today. I wanted to start off with two slides myself, just giving you kind of a high-level view of highlights and achievements the department's made just since our last hearing, beginning with the continuous modernization of our EMS system. On December 6th, I believe, we were able to place in service a new AMBO, which is AMBO 30, you know, which has been a great accomplishment for us. We're working towards also placing in service AMBO 29. The logistics that surround that are simply at the firehouse itself, making a room conducive to being occupied by EMT personnel, is kind of a bunk room, if you will. But that's moving forward at a good pace, and Chief Matts will be able to elaborate on that further during his presentation. We also have the RFP release for the nurse in the 911 center. This is going to be huge for us. This gives us the ability to triage 911 calls and divert as needed. You know, as the committee knows, we are, we're a city that takes a lot of 911 calls. We're a very, very busy service. So we believe the presence of a nurse in the 911 center to really try to filter some of these lower acuity calls and offer solutions that may not involve the dispatch of EMS resources is going to be a big positive for the city. Since our last meeting, we've also taken delivery of three new pumppers. We have one ladder truck that we're expecting any day now. What that has done is it's stabilized our reserve fleet by moving three apparatus out of frontline status into reserve, so that will assist with eliminating a lot of the downtime, which oftentimes had historically resulted in company closure. So we're very excited about that. Chief Case will have a slide later on that'll actually map out where we're going to be, I think, over the next year. Again, the 911 calls are just, you know, they're overwhelming. Just in October alone, as you see on the slide, October, over 81,000 911 calls were handled by Director Redditt and her 911 center. Even in November, we're well over 71,000 911 calls that are coming into our 911 center. Director Redditt has been able to onboard eight new 911 operators, and she's got an additional six that'll be ready to go sometime in the month of January. The city, and we're very proud of this, was the recipient of the MAKO award for innovation just for this type of work, the 911 diversion, the collaborative work between city agencies, especially our 911 center and EMS. We're very proud that the city was recognized for this award amongst such a prestigious group with MAKO. So, you know, it brings a lot of really good attention to us and a lot of the work that our employees have done along the way. Our fire prevention unit, as I had originally talked about at the last quarterly meeting, is being decentralized. The inspectors now, instead of reporting to the Lexington Street location, four out of six battalions now in the fire department have inspectors that are now assigned to geographical areas of the city. That is a move that we're making to not only make our inspectors more accessible in the community, but also having our inspectors work with fire suppression companies to conduct more inspections, but more quality inspections. That's a recent move that we've made. We anticipate after the first of the year being able to move inspectors into the last two battalions. The department has six battalions overall, so we're over halfway there with that particular program. Our arson task force is, will, I believe in January, Chief, in January, will co-locate in-person with BPD at BPD's headquarters. They work very, very closely together now. There'll be a slide later on that'll show the actual improvement over cause determination, just since we've increased the partnership with BPD. And that slide will involve, will show you that we're doing better at cause determination. And then finally, a huge point for us with employee mental health, I have put our chaplain corps back online. Our chaplains historically would be on the fire ground just to support members, but in cases where we had fire fatalities, they were also there for the families. They offer a service that we can't during those times. They were very excited to be back online, we're actively recruiting, we actually met with 25 chaplains yesterday, and they were very excited at what we're doing. And then the final piece, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Matts, is one that I'm very proud of. So the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant, it's a FEMA-based grant, and that's allowing us to put additional people in the field solely for the purpose of smoke detector installation, the identification of Code X-ray buildings, and the identification of vacant buildings. In just over a five-week period, these teams have conducted close to 900 inspections with 120 smoke detectors installed. But what I want to draw your attention to is 127 Code X-ray buildings, buildings that were in dangerous condition, dilapidated, and probably in a position of imminent collapse have been identified. What's so remarkable about this is, is we're putting two two-person teams out. So we've had the evolution of four people on a daily basis on overtime funded by a grant that's pulled these numbers down in just over five weeks. And I think that is just, it's an amazing achievement, it's very much in its infancy stages, but these numbers here show that we're putting these grant dollars to work and that it's getting results. So something that Chief Case and his team, and Chief Eames, and the Fire Prevention Bureau are working on, but it's something to be proud of.
Chairman Conway, good afternoon. Councilwoman Porter, Councilwoman Ramos, ladies and gentlemen in the chamber. For the record, my name is James Matts, I'm the Assistant Chief of EMS for the Fire Department. Today, I'm joined with part of my team, I have Dr. Benjamin Lawner, our Medical Director. Deputy Chief Timothy Cohen is our EMS Administration Deputy Chief, and I'm also joined by Deputy Chief Vanessa Sawyer, who's Field Operations for EMS. As we always do, I wanted to go through our standard metrics that we report out on, and some changes at the request of some of the councilwomen. We did change some of the maps for you today. So, and then also, I wanted to close out, I want to talk about some of our successes this year, and some of the things we're looking forward to in '24. This is one of the things we're very proud of. Remember when we first started this, I don't know if it was two years ago, year and a half ago, about these real-time dashboards? We're actually, from the point of where we were planning these, we have actually have real-time dashboards that report our community metrics, our operational metrics, as well as our clinical metrics for Dr. Lawner. So we've really come a long way. And it's a real-time snapshot of what we're looking at. In this particular dashboard, we're able to look at the areas that have the most responses by community. We did by CSAs, and if you can tell from my normal slides where I go through the top units, what we did is, we did by CSA and per 1,000 of the population, whittle through some of the top areas for that. In the instance of traffic incidents, the highest number of traffic incidents, of course, would be downtown Seton Hill, followed by Washington Village, Pig Town, southwest Baltimore, Mondomond, and then Old Town around out the top five. Cardiac arrest also is going to be topped by downtown Seton Hill. I would honestly attribute, you're going to see downtown Seton Hill for the most part, you've got to remember, during the day, we have such an influx of people into downtown. And then you're followed by Washington Village, Pig Town, Penn North, Reservoir Hills, and Upton, Drew Heights, at about 3.81 responses per 1,000 residents. For our sick cases or low acuity calls per 1,000 residents, again, downtown Seton Hill at the top with 238 incidents in quarter three. Harbor East and Little Italy is number two. Old Town Middle East is third, and then Cent Town Winchester around out the top four, at approximately 229 incidents over that quarter. Trauma, trauma per 1,000 residents, the highest incidence of trauma in the third quarter were at 44 incidents, and that was at Brooklyn, Curtis Bay, Hawkins Point, followed by Upton, Drew Heights, Green Mount East, and then Popleton, Hollins Market area. Opioids or naloxone-type incidents, downtown Seton Hill once again is at the top with 38 incidents in the third quarter, followed by Upton, Drew Heights. Cent Town Winchester comes in third at 29 incidents. Midway Coldstream will come in fourth, and then Pimlico, Arlington, and Hilltop in our northwest corridor would round out the top five. Low acuity calls per 1,000 residents, these are the ones we're going to target with a lot of our innovative programs. Again, downtown Seton Hill is going to be the top with 702 calls just in that quarter alone. Harbor East, Little Italy, followed by Old Town, Washington Village, and then Upton, Drew Heights. And then this is the last slide of the heat map, and this is all EMS incidents per 1,000. Downtown this quarter again did the top with 1,700 responses in that quarter alone. Upton Drew Heights was number two, followed by Washington Village, Pig Town, Harbor East, Little Italy at 649, and then Old Town ran out your top five at 1,230 incidents. The operational metrics, we're kind of trying to abbreviate the slides, I know last time we were kind of heavy with 55 slides, so I tried to bring a couple of them together. What I did is I did our top five ALS and BLS calls on the same slide. As you would expect for our advanced life support or ALS-type calls, our top and most frequent types of calls would be our Alpha, I'm sorry, our Delta determinants, and sometimes Charlie or Echo you'll see in there as well. Breathing problems would be your most frequent, which is trouble breathing at 1,700 responses. An unknown problem, we get a lot of unknowns, it turned out to be ALS. Trouble breathing, sick abdominal breathing, and then sick, non-aesthetic or unconscious. A lot of times, those calls can actually lead into cardiac arrest or something of that nature. Basic life support, you're going to see most of those calls would be our 26 card or our sick. That's like the most generalized call, and that's one of the ones we target, especially that 26 Alpha card, which is the lowest acuity. Sick or not well, a vehicle accident with 29 Bravo would be our next most frequent BLS call. Sick in general is our third, and then we're going to round out the top five with abdominal pain, and then fall injuries would be our 17 card. Call volume, one of the things I would caution people to look at when they look at our call volumes, people get a lot really confused with incidents versus responses versus transports. It's something you've got to understand, there's one unique incident for every call. There can be multiple units on one call, for instance, a cardiac arrest could have up to four pieces. So that'll be the number four people responding, and then there would be one transport out of that. So in this instance alone, for EMS and suppression during this quarter, we had 54,754 responses. This is our operational metrics dashboard, one, that goes over and reviews, it's a nice snapshot to look at total responses month to month. It's also an opportunity for us to look at overdoses. In this particular quarter, our overdoses are actually, I'm sorry, this is our median response time for suppression view that we look at. We look at the median as well as 90th percent. We also look at average response time to sensitive EMS calls. You know, a lot of times, they try to make us report on our average response time. In a well-developed and well-rounded EMS system, we're targeting the response time to sensitive calls. That's where we want to make the fastest calls we can, to chest pains, heart attacks, things of that nature. It's okay if the low acuity or low priority calls wait a little bit. That's where I think that metric needs to go. So we target that in this instance. In this case, in this snapshot, we were at 9.84 was our average time for that. The following metric, or Operations Metric 2, is really directed around our transports. And then you could see month to month, we averaged roughly about 7,000 transports a month. We also look at our offload times. We're going to talk a little bit later about offload time. We've made some significant improvements in offload times over the last two years. I was actually doing like an annual thing today. We were up at 70 and 80 minutes at off time. Now we're running like 40 to 50, which is significant improvement, but Dr. Lawner and I'll be getting into some of that later. Dr. Lawner, you want to talk about this, Patrick?
Yeah, I can go over this on the behavioral health metrics, I have a detailed slide on that too, if you like. Speaking of which, okay. Thank you again, it's a privilege to be here. As you know, we all are familiar with some of the challenges that face our city, specifically our emergency responders, and hopefully this will be a very good overview of not only what challenges we face, but as Chief Matts had said, and Chief Wallace had mentioned, where we're going and what progress are we making to our overall goal. So in some of the themes that we'll talk about, it is not lost on this esteemed body here that we have a very persistently high EMS utilization. Whether that is the 911 calls, and the 79,000 per month is just incredibly high, or whether it's the demand of services, we are constantly trying to mitigate that, especially in the setting of staffing issues. So a lot of the stuff that we focus on will be targeted to dealing with some of these things. I think some of the good news is that there's a continued move towards a tailored 911 response. And as we've said since the beginning of this collaborative, it is impossible to continue responding emergency to everything, so we're looking at alternative destinations and other programs to do this. Now, Chief Matts had mentioned the offload delay, and I think this is very important to understand. When we started this, our median offload delays were not only significantly high, but if you looked at the 90th percentile, the 90th percentile was above 50 to 60 minutes. And our goal, since we started with hospital collaboration meetings, was we want to keep it around 40 or so. And if you look at that slide, the 90th percentile has inched down. And the reason why that's important is because we have hospitals that vary. So if you were to go to shock-trauma, you're not going to wait for 50 minutes for a bed. So if you're just looking at average offload time, you know, a two-minute offload time says, oh, the system's performing well, but that neglects our colleagues over at Bayview, where they have 80,000 patients a year. So what we want to see is the 90th percentile time dropping below 50, and happy to report that that is a continued trend. And that is a no small, I think, credit to the work of not only this body, but our colleagues at the mayor's office. In terms of broad highlights, and this is just to keep on track, the last time we were here, my colleague Jeff Nussbaum presented on some of these. So for telling 911, that is permitting people, and for lower acuity calls, our responders and our clinicians on fire suppression, to actually speak with a board-certified emergency physician. Now, we had to actually amend state law to make this happen, because, without going into too much detail, state law considers medical direction is coming from a hospital. So we worked with the state to amend the Code of Maryland regulations so that limited medical direction could be provided. We have the iPads, we have the training, and I'm, hopefully, this will go live in February, and then in future visits, we can talk about what that looks like. We want to do a pilot, and after about six months, we'll evaluate how many calls, and we think that's going to be a successful diversion. The RN triage line, it is going through the RFP process. Now, there may be a slight extension to that date, because the RN triage line has made a significant amount of progress since the last time we talked. GMR, for example, is one of the giants. Global Medical Response is a company that does this for no fewer than 12 jurisdictions. There are others, but as more jurisdictions basically contribute their challenges and their opportunities, we're able to modify it. So they, for example, extend the triage line with different nurses, they build a social health information exchange. So there may be a couple of weeks to that extension while we incorporate revised metrics so we can essentially mirror what our colleagues do, not only in DC, but in other busy jurisdictions. And we will be happy to point that out and also metricize that as well. Disratcher form is going on, we did a sweeping review of four years of data, and we constantly talk about the lower acuity calls, and there is opportunity in conjunction of our colleagues. If we know, for example, that advanced life support is performed less than 0.1% of the time for a certain call, specifically the 26 Alpha call, which is when you call 911 and you can't really articulate a specific system, you're just unwell, there may be an opportunity to not only reduce wear and tear, but prevent going down emergencies and prevent sending fire suppression apparatus. We will make our recommendations up through the chain of command. We will make our recommendations up through the chain of command. We do have contracted ambulances, we're continuing, and we'll talk a little bit about alternative destination. Chief Matts had mentioned that we were the recipient of an award, but as you know, we cannot be complacent with accomplishments here. The behavioral health diversion is the tip of the iceberg. We did publish our findings in the American Journal of Emergency Medicine. In addition to that award, we are continuing to expand with our colleagues across the way on 911. We have introduced a couple of other determinants, and we are still working with our BHSB colleagues to incorporate a clinician into the call center. And the clinician is going to be very important because, as you know, and this segues into this next slide, if you're in a call center that gets over thousands of calls per day and you have less than 60 seconds to dispatch if it's cardiac arrest, it is very difficult, and we've talked about this, how to sort out the calls. And so we found that we need somebody else or a different position in there, and we're hoping that the clinician in that call center will move that ineligible calls down into the, maybe around the 60th percentile. What we're seeing is, in addition to a lot of the diversion determinants, a lot of them are ineligible because we can't ask the correct questions, or people say, I don't know, I want an ambulance. And we're hoping that continued collaboration will push that number of ineligible calls down. The good news is, we are regularly fielding about probably 150 calls in a two-week period. So those are people that, those are citizens that help us to really bridge the gaps between our program and 988. And that's one of, I think, the salient points with behavioral health diversion. It's one of those areas where we have cross-disciplinary collaboration. Now, alternative destination is where you can go to someplace other than a hospital. I wish we could wave a magic wand and take people to doctor's office immediately. There are a couple of challenges that we need to do. We have an upcoming meeting with MIMS, and I know we've socialized this at the council chambers as well. We are working with Maryland Medicaid to fund Uber and Lyft, and that is one of our goals in 2024. Our ability to divert expands exponentially if we don't do it by an ambulance. The challenge we have now is, we can transport people to an alternative destination, but if we are using an ambulance to do that, it's taking away an advanced or basic life support unit, and then we increase offload times. And what you'll see on this slide is this shows on the left, every, so for every month, and this, so in a place that does, let's say, 190,000 responses for EMS, we're about maybe around 15 or double digits per day to alternative destinations. This is one piece. It is not the complete piece of the puzzle. And then when you look over there at our BHSB locations, so there are places such as Turquoise and Goodenziya, the demand for services on EMS is pretty, is fairly significant. We talked a little bit about collaboration, and we continue to meet with them monthly, and I'm happy to report that those numbers hopefully will be trending down. If you look at the pickups from those locations, we want to link our patients to the resources they need, and hopefully those will be, those will continue to decrease. I am not, so thankfully, I will not go into a lot of detail. I will simply state that the Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services Systems has adopted a national clinical metrics, and we are happy to report we are ahead of the curve. We dashboard a lot of our clinical successes, whether that's cardiac arrest, whether that's airway management, whether that's stroke. So anybody that looks at an EMS system will be able to say, how is your system performing? And we look at national benchmarks. So we are, I would argue, in lockstep with that. We have a lot of ways to go with improving some of the metrics, but with our dashboard reporting, we are doing some of those. I would call your attention to the stroke metrics, which are actually quite good. This is where we document blood glucose, stroke mimics, last known well time, and this is reflective of how our training does. We abstract charts and we look at compliance for individual tests. So this is a trend that we want to keep continuing. We have just recently changed our cardiac metrics to refine them, but happy to report in the last month, we continue to see high monitoring of end tidal CO2 and also compliance with advanced airway. So this helps us basically guide training initiatives. This is also something else that looks at STEMI, so this is a type of heart attack, and in any system where you have a significant demand on services, it is very difficult sometimes to get a 12 lead within 10 minutes of EMS arrival, but we are hopefully going to move that metric forward. That is an opportunity, especially that we, you know, when we keep our ambulances available to actually identify that 12 lead because that is a time-sensitive metric. Rounding this out is cardiac arrest, which, as those of you who have been through this presentation before, this is another area of improvement, quite frankly, in Baltimore City. We were very lucky with the support of the Fire Department to collaborate with the Johns Hopkins School of Public Health. So that intern just concluded a six-month rotation with us and published a thesis on how to basically improve cardiac arrest metrics, especially looking in, looking through the lens of healthcare equity. Meaning if you have your cardiac arrest metrics that are afflicted by overdose and patients with less healthcare literacy, what are some strategies that we can adopt? And so that is a thesis that we hopefully continue. I am meeting again with the dean of the public health college there, or, I'm sorry, the head of that program, to see where we can implement those, and we will be moving the cardiac arrest community CPR under the EMS umbrella with the support of Chief Wallace to hopefully address these in a targeted way. This is basically some benchmarks from the cardiac arrest registry to enhance survival. You'll notice that our 911 metrics are pretty much on point. The response times are a little bit extended, and we've discussed that before when we talk about the demand for EMS. So sometimes dispatched to arrival, we have a higher percentage of systems, or we have a higher percentage of calls that go beyond that eight minutes, and that is always obviously an area of opportunity. And speaking of those, if you look at counties, this is something that is consistently shown in the CPR literature. So what we want to see is basically the bystander intervention rate. Now, fortunately, the last time we reported, we were about 19 to 20%, so that is inching up, but that bystander intervention rate is really related to overall survival. So when we, when we compare ourselves to different counties, we can look at specific strategies. It's really difficult to generalize, but that area is one of intensive focus, which will, I think, be as highlighted by Chief Matts, an area for improvement in our community CPR outreach. And with that, any questions for the clinical metrics?
You want me to just finish this slide?
Okay. I think that was for Chief Collin.
Okay, so we're going to step over to our population health. We're happy to report, and I'm going to pass it over to Deputy Chief Collin in just a moment. We've been running the population health group now for about 100 to 110 days. They've been targeting different areas throughout the city as well as different problems we have in the city, particularly around opioid and harm reduction, high utilizers, as well as leave behind Narcan. So Chief, I'll go ahead and divert that to you now.
Yes, sir. Next slide. Thanks. You can go back one.
Deputy Chief Timothy Collin, good afternoon. In September, I had the opportunity to introduce the Fire Department's population health expansion, which was our implementation of a mobile response unit. The unit's purpose, again, was to provide an immediate connection to a resource occurring citywide during emergency incidents, after emergency incidents, or randomly in areas of the community identified as having incidents of suspected opioid use. Next slide, please. So again, our unit's been operational since July 11th. I'll be presenting our five-month totals. Our patient and citizen contacts, we've contacted 136 emergency patients, or emergency patients during incidents. Our biggest impact is providing resources to family bystanders, community members who witnessed an event or who are in areas of suspected opioid use, and we've outreach 2,427 citizens. Our high utilizer outreach, we recently began phase two of the program, which is attempting to outreach our high utilizers. We identify a high utilizer as a patient who responded, who we have responded to five or more times in a 90-day period. For the months of September to November, we had 239 patients we've identified as high utilizers, accounting for approximately 1,758 responses. The number of high utilizers is usually closer to 300. These are very complex cases. We outreach, attempted to outreach 68 of those, and we were successful in contacting 11 of those. Next slide, please. This provides an overview of our five-month totals in some key areas. Population health awareness training, so this is our small-scale on-the-spot training. This is done during or after an incident, or randomly if we identify an area to focus, focus on between responses. This includes handing out resources, leave behind Narcan kits to community members, families, bystanders who may have witnessed an incident. And we've done 451 events, which equals about 76 hours of community training. We also continue to, continue our efforts with the Health Department. We provide homebound vaccinations, COVID vaccinations, and our total there is 1,130. Outside agency program referrals, we attempt to connect a patient to a resource while we're on the scene of an incident, and our totals there are 84. And in some cases, we can address an immediate need to a patient, food, water, blankets, gloves, things like that, wound care kits. That also helps us initiate some conversations, 633 total there. Next slide, please. So this, this is the program's area of significant, significant impact is our leave behind Narcan efforts. Prior to the population health expansion, the Fire Department as a whole distributed 2,661 leave behind Narcan kits, that's 5,322 doses. We started approximately 2018. In a five-month operational period, our one unit has distributed, those are our one-unit totals there as of last week, but as of yesterday, we distributed 2,920 kits, approximately 5,840 doses. So the Fire Department's total efforts for leave behind naloxone distribution, 5,581 kits, which is equaling about 11,162 doses. And it's important to note, the people we're giving the kits to aren't just random, just random, random citizens. The Fire Department's efforts are focused on patients who are known substance users, family members of known substance users, bystanders of incidents involving overdoses, members of the community in areas where an incident just occurred, or an area that we've identified through surveillance as having had recent or increased incidents involving opioid use. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. It's really interesting. They've done some amazing work in five months. If you think about it, in five years, they gave out, they give out as much in five months as they give out the whole prior five years with that program. So they're really making an impact, getting down on the street. They started gravitating towards also providing some different services, linking people with, like people encouraging people, healthcare on the spot. They're doing some real, real down the, down the street level work with our citizens. And then I wanted to close out my last couple of slides with some accomplishments and then some directions we're going in '24. Under the direction of the mayor and the leadership of Chief Wallace, in 2023, we were able to expand EMS service. Thanks to the funds we were able to obtain from the ESPP or the Emergency Service Supplemental Payment Program, it was, we were able to leverage that to expand our QA, to expand our training, almost complete all of our expansions we needed to. We got Ambu 30 up and running, which was part of that expansion as well. Offload improvements, we highlighted earlier, that's significant because it's not just us. We're working with our 11 partner hospitals as well as all surrounding jurisdictions. Ambu 30, Chief Wallace highlighted earlier, we were able to get that out and work it in the Hartford Road Corridor. Eventually, when we finish our firehouse for Engine 27, that's where it will reside. The nursing and 911 center, Dr. Loner talked quite a bit about that. We're at the finish line of that. We almost have that part done where we can start working with a group, be able to divert some of the low acuity. Telemedicine is huge. MIMS has already approved it, all the EMS board approved it. It's actually out for public comment. Mid-January, late January, that's done, and then we'll be able to move forward with that. That was huge to get Maryland state law change. Behavioral health diversion, they've been working on that for, what's that roughly been? Year and a half?
Two years.
Two years, and they got the innovation award recognized by, you know, surrounding jurisdictions. It's really impressive. Our real-time dashboards, the data team has done a great job with going, you know, to have real-time dashboards and a snapshot of what we're doing. Optional protocols, we've already been approved for buprenorphine, hydroxy cabolamine, which is cyanide treatment, and we're also actively working on whole blood. Whole blood is huge. And then Chief Collin just highlighted our advances in population health. In 2024, the following goals we have, we want to do advanced life support chase vehicles. Having paramedics alone has been a real challenge right now, especially post-pandemic. What we're trying to do is put highly-trained paramedics together where they can go out to a low, you know, a BLS unit and upgrade them to a higher level of treatment. We want to get ambulance 29 up and operational. We had a couple of little things we have to do at the firehouse and try to get that up soon. We want to operationalize the nursing and 911 center and telemedicine, not just talk about it, we want to be on the grounds piloting and actually doing it, figuring out what works and what doesn't. Medicaid, Uber and Lyft, Dr. Loner's talked about that. We're actively trying to get Medicaid to pay for Uber or Lyft. It's $29. Medicaid's paying 100 and a quarter to $150 a transaction. It's simple math. That's going to work in line with the deferred, the nursing and 911 center. Community outreach, Dr. Loner was highlighting some of our shortfalls with CPR. One of the big pushes in 2024 is community outreach. We're going to be going after four pillars. It's going to be hands-on with CPR, stop the bleed, leave behind Narcan, and then Baltimore City is a stroke-smart city. We want to get those four pillars, what we're going to target our community outreach with. Behavioral health diversion, I want them to continue to keep advance, making their advancements. Real-time dashboards are going to convert over to population health so we can have some more real-time data at our fingertips. And then finally, we want to expand the number of programs that population health is offering. And at that, I'm open to questions, sir.
Sure. I will open up the floor. Thank you, Chief. I'll open up the floor to questions from the committee. I had a lot of thoughts. We've done a lot this year. I mean, last couple of years, you guys have been really, really busy. It's, it's exciting to see, one, that you're continuing to tweak and innovate on your innovations, but, but two, that we're actually, you know, getting a lot done. So appreciate the hard work you guys have been doing over the last year, and excited about some of the innovative ways that you're thinking about tackling some of the longstanding issues that the department's been seeing on the ambulatory side. So one of the thoughts that came to mind for me, and I think we had a little bit of this conversation before, when we were talking about our frequent utilizers, folks that are regularly calling for ambulances, and they may have somewhat complicated situations. They may be homeless, they may be dealing with mental health issues, they may have longstanding chronic health issues as well. I'm curious, I know we have that program going, or at least have started to dig into it. Can you tell me a little bit about how that's going, what, what next steps are, and just a little bit more on that?
With regard to the, to the high utilizer?
High utilizers, yes.
So there's, there's a lot of different parts of that. I'm going to let Chief Collin talk momentarily. One of the big problems with that, these are complex patients, and I'm sure Dr. Loner's going to, these people that are usually our super-user population tend to be homeless. A lot of them have mental health issues as well as substance use problems. So what we're doing is, one, we're trying to collaborate with some of our city partners. We're just actively trying to activate our relationship with the mayor's office of homeless services and bring some additional services to the Health Department. We have Johns Hopkins as well as their people encouraging people, as well as just-in-time treatment. So we're trying to bring a wide variety of wraparound services to there, but I'll defer to Chief Collin.
Yes, sir. Chief Matt summed up the majority of it. And again, each case is complex, and what we do is, we do a case review on each case. We'll pull patient care tickets, we'll pull CRIS reports from hospitals. If you matched our high utilizer list to University of Maryland, to Johns Hopkins, to Good Samaritan, MedStar, they're all the same. So we're all dealing with those cases. The Fire Department doesn't have the ability to provide social work, and we shouldn't. Our goals and our efforts should be increased with starting the conversations, identifying the people, and passing them to another resource. The difficulty we have is finding resources who can accept that because it's an overall problem, the hospitals, larger healthcare facilities, the Health Department can't keep up with either. We have had those conversations with them before the program started, during the program started, and again, each case may need, one, one case may need food services, housing services, addiction services. So we would try to connect and reach, reach out to separate services that way, but there's no, there's no one number for us to call. And again, until we have resources to reach out to that can accept those patients.
I appreciate that. I'm curious, how often do we meet with other folks who are in this space and should be helping? Because you're right, a lot of the services necessary to resolve the issue are not, they're not found in the Fire Department. And I would disagree with you, though. I don't think that's the Fire Department's responsibility, but you guys are realizing the brunt of that responsibility on the backend. So I'm curious, how often do we meet with, you know, homeless services or any of these other folks, and how can they kind of pick up the slack on the front end? How can we make sure they have the resources to relieve some of the stress you're seeing down the line?
So we're meeting monthly right now. We're trying to get back to the cadence we had pre-pandemic. We had a really robust relationship with them. Dr. Loner would go to Mayor's Office of Homeless Service monthly, and there would be a whole cadre of people that were there from all different services, hospital-based, because we all have an interest in this space. We're trying to get that space reactivated. The other thing that Chief Collin pointed out, those services change day to day. You know, the active list that we have that's working today, it won't be working in a month. So we try to constantly stay on top of that. The boots-on-the-ground people that meet with, like, the healthcare on the spot, we talk to them almost weekly, if not daily. If there's a problem, we have an issue on the street, we actually have the ability to call them and say, hey, can you take this patient now for this minor treatment? And they'll accept it. So it varies, but at a minimum, monthly is where we're at.
I would, so I would agree, obviously, with everything that's said, and I'm glad you mentioned the fact that these citizens you mentioned the fact that these citizens need services. And just because we don't succeed in decreasing recidivism doesn't mean that we shouldn't meet with this. We are on the front lines, and I can tell you that in addition to the homeless services meeting, we meet with the Behavioral Health Commission, which is the GBRX Council. We meet with the Sentinel Review Committee. So I think, at the very least, we have gotten a lot better with sharing information. But I think the underscoring need here is that the, these determinants of substance use, homelessness, mental illness, are something that is, that is a very common theme, and it's very difficult, I think, to stabilize those things without housing. So we're very grateful for the collaboration with the mayor's office of homeless services, but this is a challenge that, I think, involves a lot of agencies, not the least of which is public safety.
How many folks are we talking about as we look at this list? Is it a list of twenty, a hundred, seven hundred?
For our high utilizers, for our purposes, so in a six-month period between September and November, we identify them as five or more, calling 911 five or more times, there were two hundred and thirty-nine. But normally, that number's about three hundred is the average for probably years.
And how many of those folks would you say, would we estimate percentage-wise are homeless?
I couldn't give you a definitely number right now.
I think, you know, I think that would be a pretty telling number if we could figure that out. And let's say we need to figure out a hundred apartments for folks, and we could, we can put a price on that, and we can figure out how to prioritize it, or find programs that exist to find housing for those hundred or so folks. But, you know, just for us as a committee, I think it's helpful to understand where the gaps are and where the needs are, and that might be one of them for you, and it might be something else. But as you guys sort of categorize the problems that we're seeing with these high utilizers, I suspect that we'll find, once we solve those hundred or so problems, you know, for those hundred or so people that are homeless, you know, we can focus on the next ones, and so on and so forth. So I want to turn it over to my colleagues. Any questions before we continue? I want to also acknowledge Councilman Cohen and Councilman Glover, who've joined the meeting. No questions from this side? Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One caveat to what you just said. There are several of our repeaters that may not want housing, and that has been a challenge for us. We, Councilman Torrance and I have a constituent, anyway, they sometimes don't want it. And so that is something that I think is a biggest challenge for all of us who want to have, make sure that there is housing available for folks.
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
With a question, when you say they don't want housing, is it that they don't want housing, period, or they don't want the housing that we're offering?
There's multiple issues here. One is that often, in order to get housing initially, they have to go to shelter, and there are, we still don't have non-congregate shelter. So particularly, women and children are not going to go into shelter. So there's that piece. We've also heard that there are people who are with substance abuse issues who are afraid to be alone because no one will find them if they overdose. We have other, I mean, I am dedicated to making sure that everybody gets housing, no question about it. I'm just acknowledging the challenges that we continue to have, that housing would allow for us to, you know, be able to resolve. But if we are unable to build the trust that they will have the services and the needs taken care of, that becomes an issue. So I'm just pointing out the additional challenge that may occur, but acknowledging that we still, we can't give up the fight. So I just, you know, wanted to put that caveat there. I had a question about, I'm, again, super proud of everybody related to the 911 diversion. Mako Award is a really, really big deal. So that's, congratulations, that's amazing. You mentioned that there are more things that are being diverted from 911. Can you give us, if I missed it, do you mind repeating what those are? Because initially, it was just suicidal ideation, and I think all of us said, wait a second, that's not enough. So what's the, what are the others?
So it is not enough. There are a couple of call types. So we recently redid our computer aided dispatch call types. So it is suicidal ideation, suicidal ideation with a plan, and then some other nondescript crisis that does not fall into some of the other stuff. So we have the 25 Alpha 1, Alpha 3, the Bravo determinants, and then remember-
I'm sorry, I have no idea what that means.
Yeah, so what that, that is the, so as we, as we talked about before, it's the, it is the EMD cards. There's a specific card that we assign to behavioral health emergencies, and we have increased the number of cards that are assigned under those behavioral health emergencies. The challenge to go beyond that is that the, again, the people at 911 don't have the ability to sort through once there's a co-presenting medical complaint. So we have expanded underneath that card. We still have an opportunity, if they don't, if they're not eligible and they call for, say, a seizure or abdominal pain, that's how emergency medical dispatch works. And unless there's a clinician in there, it's very difficult to go back. I will say that we've also expanded the co-notification. So for example, if somebody calls and says they have chest pain, which is an automatic send, we can still connect them with BCRI. The challenge is the 911 system right now is, this is a big issue with, I think, urban systems where the funnel. If it comes to 911, unless it goes onto one of those determinants, it's very difficult to divert completely. So to specifically answer your question, it's a couple of other determinants under that overdose behavioral health emergencies card, which includes a couple of more things than just suicidal ideation.
What are those other couple of things?
So that's suicidal ideation with a plan, behavioral crisis, hallucinations. Sometimes there's a remark for, like, it's not specifically anxiety, but stressors related to substance use, for example. They're very broad generalized topics.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we were hoping to have diverted would be, you know, just having a mental health crisis, and that, that doesn't deserve a police response. So that's kind of what I was looking for, is that where, if we're there yet. I mean, it sounds like we're getting there in terms of trying to pinpoint exactly what language everybody's using to try to figure out what that is. But the main thing, for me at least, is, you know, we, I no longer want to have a police response for a mental health crisis when the person just needs assistance. And I realize that sometimes BCRI may say, well, you know, this person could be violent, so we need to have a police response. We don't want a police response in a lot of these cases. So that, I'm just trying to make sure that we're getting, at least getting there. It doesn't sound like we're there yet, but I really, and part of it is resource allocation for BCRI, which we've been working on. But also just, you know, there are key things that we want to have done, which is not a police response.
So this is a great point, and I would also reiterate that unless there is one of the violent determinants, that police are not automatically sent. So if it is a behavioral health crisis, which is, again, up to a little bit of judgment, the police are not sent unless there is the threat of violence or the imminent threat of harm. So that diversion is in place now. We are working with the government lab at Harvard to standardize those descriptors so that we follow the same suits, we follow the same protocols as other agencies that are doing this. And that is always a work in progress. But I would underscore your comment that when we meet through the Greater Baltimore Behavioral Health Council and everyone else, we always want to divert people with quote-unquote "just behavioral health crises" away from police. The current diversion does that unless it is violent or unless there's a threat of harm. And that is an issue, as you point out, about how we, how we ask the question and how we provide the service.
Right, okay. And then my second question was, one of the slides had, that you're starting to look at the low-acuity calls and the sensitive calls in terms of being able to triage properly, right? And you sort of alluded to it initially, but the, so the more sensitive calls are obviously the big emergency ones, whereas the low-acuity calls, you're trying to find this other, so just make sure that we have a definition of what the sensitive calls means.
We, so, and thank you again for mentioning that. Our time-sensitive calls are the penetrating trauma, the cardiac arrest, the heart attacks. And there are, as I mentioned earlier, and sometimes we get carried away with some of the keywords, there are a couple of priority complaints in 911. So there is hemorrhage, loss of consciousness, stroke, STEMI, things like that, and that's a type of heart attack. And I, and I think, when you look at data, we have very good data to suggest certain determinants right off the top, right? Because what 911 does is, when they say, you know, what's your emergency, they ask all those high-priority questions. If the answers to those are no, it gets classified as what we call an alpha, which is the lowest priority. The most important thing is, we never want to leave anybody alone, so we're always going to connect them to a resource, whether that is a nurse triage line, whether that is a non-emergency transport. There will be no quote-unquote "refusal" of 911 services. But the 911 system, despite all of its, and when I say 911 system, the EMD, the Emergency Medical Dispatch System, how we triage calls despite all of its shortcomings, does very good with a certain type of call type, like alert people who fall, single extremity trauma, and just the generalized sick without those high-priority symptoms.
And then just to finish that out, we do approximately 33,000 low-acuity calls a year. We're trying to let those calls wait a little bit and have them diverted to an appropriate resource, which could be the nursing and 911 center or something. That's where we're trying to differentiate between high priority or high-acuity calls and the response time to those, as well as the low acuity.
Thank you. I have another question, but I'll wait till the next one.
Any other questions? Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the folks from Fire and EMS and Chief Lawner. Fastest question before, but I'm asking again, have you all connected with the Peer Navigator program that's in the Enoch Pratt Free Library System around substance use disorder?
We tried to navigate and to reach out to the Peer Navigator. We didn't have any response when we reached out. Is that correct? We did actively try it a couple of times in a row.
Okay. I think it would be, again, worth it to just directly connect with the library system. It is, like you all, it is now an award-winning program, and would love to see that partnership. They're working directly on the front lines with people, and everything we know, it's evidence-based, it's, you know, peer support works. And so by the next hearing, would appreciate if that connection has been fully made and cemented by your team. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. And again, congrats on the award. I think that's huge, and it's great for our city, for a city that was the, one of the prime architects for the war on drugs, and for mass incarceration, and for mass arrests, to now be seen as a leader in really going the other direction and supporting mental health and trauma and substance use disorder in a public health way and in a non-carceral way, I think is huge. So I do want to, again, give you all props for that. I am interested, though, sort of on that note, as we continue to see just a very high rate of overdose deaths in our city, and, and again, as you all continue to work with BCRI and the hospitals and other partners, I'm interested in sort of knowing how we are thinking about the nexus. You talked a little bit about housing, but really around treatment, and whether it's medically assisted treatment, whether it's, you know, whatever, whichever path, I think, you know, we, as we've said here a lot, can go out and treat and triage and resuscitate and, you know, bring folks back from the dead with Narcan and all the other good work that you all do. But unless we are exiting that doom loop, we know where it's going to invariably end up. And so I am curious, just from a, like, how are we thinking about moving folks out of that cycle of addiction and dependency and into some sort of longer-term treatment? I know we have a number of facilities in the city. I know it can be complicated to get beds, but if you could just get into that a little bit.
Sure. I'm going to start, and I'll pass it over to Dr. Lawner. So to start with, it's a multifaceted approach. We have to be able to treat people that want treatment at the time. That's where we do people encouraging people. If we go on the scene of an overdose and somebody says, I want treatment now, we're going to be able to link up with people encouraging people to make that happen. We also have the ability to take people to the stabilization center. And one of the third pieces that we're really at the final stretch on right now is buprenorphine. We've already been approved with the state of Maryland to do that. We're going to be using strictly the population health people. Why? Because Dr. Lawner can have a few people highly trained to be able to identify that. And then what they're going to do is do the initial treatment of buprenorphine, and then we have to transition them into treatment. And then, Dr. Lawner, I'll pass that over you.
Yeah, this is a very difficult, and if I could answer this question, I probably would have a much smoother emergency department shift as well. So I totally agree. And I want to mention, I think, for, for those of us that have attended this, this forum before, this is also very difficult. So if you look at our refusal rates of people that overdose, it is over 30 to 40%, meaning that the people that are overdosing from naloxone that are brought back are what we call pre-contemplative, meaning they are not really interested in getting into a program. And that is very difficult for paramedics to have the skills to say, hey, I know we've just, to use your words, brought you back from the dead. And that literature is consistent either. So number one is connecting the paramedics to 988. There are a variety of programs that do that. But I firmly believe, if, if looking at the emergency medical services literature, it really needs to be a peer support team with mobile crisis, and that is ongoing. I don't think paramedics are well-positioned to do that type of motivational speaking. We, there's a lot of bias in our city. There is a lot of implicit bias. There's also a lot of demand. So the other thing that I would challenge is that, in the buprenorphine protocol, which I feel very strongly about, we applied and we are working that, the state of Maryland does not allow, the paramedics don't practice medicine under, independently. And right now, that program, the linkage to care, lives under population health. So a paramedic cannot prescribe or link somebody to treatment with buprenorphine. It has to go through mobile integrated health. We are working with the state to get that changed. And then the final piece, so buprenorphine is one piece, 988 is another, is, again, the relationship that we have with our mobile crisis teams, which are not directly related to 911, because when we socialize the information of who's having an overdose and where they are, we can at least target people that repeatedly contact the 911 system and get them the resources you need. Because you're absolutely correct, linkage to care at the point of service is one of the most challenging and difficult things in this emergency response to opioids. So I agree.
Yeah. And again, that is why I'm very excited for you all to connect with the Peer Navigators at Enoch Pratt. I do think, to your point, it really, I think there is something powerful about someone who has been there and experienced that same set of challenges, and also has in some way overcome, or at least stabilized their own life, that can reach people at a time where they're struggling. So look forward to that, and again, appreciate the work. Thank you both, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions before we move on? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about the work that you're trying to do to find Uber and Lyft to transport people to care, the low-acuity calls. I have a bit of concern about that. I mean, I think that it's, I know what you're trying to do, not use ambulance for everything. There may be a level of comfort that residents have that's not going with somebody who is a medical person to go to. Anyway, talk a little bit more about that. If, I mean, I wonder if we needed to just have a separate transport, either contract with a transport entity or a one that's sponsored by the fire department. I mean, I don't mind supporting local entrepreneurs. I just, I'm just wondering about that trust factor relative to-
It's just a tool in the toolcase that we're going to have. It gives us the ability, in the right circumstance, under the right type of patient, to take that patient through an alternative transportation means to an alternative destination. That would be something where we could be linking with the nursing and 911 center. Hey, I have a doctor's appointment set up for you in total healthcare. Do you have time? I can send a car to pick you up if you don't have transport. That would be the situations where he's talking about.
Okay.
Saving Ambu, saving the state, saving everybody money. It's extremely expensive to run Ambus. The $29 versus $150 is a huge example right there. It's just, some places around the country are doing that. We're trying to evolve to that. Are we going to be doing that tomorrow? No. There's a lot of legal work we got to do. For the longest time, Medicaid wouldn't even talk to Dr. Lawner about it. I don't think they're still talking to him now, but we're trying to get the conversation moving to be able to do that, because it's a no-brainer to be able to save that money. But it's on a select type of calls.
I would also mention, too, that not only, you know, we look at, EMS has now evolved that we can look at best practices. This is not only supporting the local businesses, this is doing what is done across the country. And I want to underscore your concern that this is all predicated upon consent. So we are not putting people in Uber and saying you don't need to go. What happens in this idealized state is somebody calls 911, and we say, what's wrong? They say, I have a toothache. And they say, okay, we have a couple of options. You can either, you know, it goes to the nurse in the 911 center, and whether that's a virtual person, they actually assess their needs, and the patients have to agree, right? So this is not, these are patients that say, okay, I don't want to go to the hospital by ambulance. They have to agree to the diversion. Now, it is a little bit biased, because if they call without the priority symptoms, we can divert them there, but we are not forcing people to go. The other thing I would, I would also mention here is that right now, we have a, and you saw it on the dashboard, we have a sign- saw it on the dashboard, we have a significant problem with suppression standby time. If you look at the amount of time that our fire engines and suppression apparatus stay on the scene, there are certain calls where it's upwards of 20 to 30 minutes, and those are the most vulnerable patients, because they don't get the definitive hospital care, they don't get transported to the destination they want, and then some of them leave anyway. So, the thought is, as opposed to saying, "Your pathway is the hospital or your fuse EMS," we're expanding the opportunities. And it might not be Uber only. Sometimes it could be a cab voucher, sometimes it could be a non-emergency ride, and quite frankly, it could also be treat-in-place with the telehealth initiative. So, we are very sensitive to those concerns. We don't want to force anybody into a decision that they're not comfortable with, and we will follow the national guidelines with those programs.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chief Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna turn it over to our HR Director, Jamar Raine.
Good afternoon, Jamar Raine, HR Director for Baltimore City Fire Department. So, we're gonna be looking at the demographics in reference to where we are with the staff in the fire department. We're gonna start off, because this year was one of our main years, our important year for EMT firefighters. So, with that being said, we had a total of 14, 1,431 persons to actually apply for the position. We had a final list of 356. What that means is that persons who have went through their physical agility test, the oral interview, and also the written interview, we're currently waiting for the tabulation of those numbers. We look to have our first class very, very soon, but we're waiting to get those numbers so that we can go ahead and, for persons to go to the Fire Academy. I do want to say that during this process, between February and April, we had over 5,000 contacts with the local community, over 25 contacts with community events, and also schools, to make sure that the community Baltimore City residents were aware of the initiative of becoming an EMT firefighter. So, currently, we have two classes that are projected to graduate in February of '24. We have an EMT firefighter class of, that started in June, that, again, there's 33 of those who are scheduled to graduate in February. And we also have a smaller class of just EMTs who are, again, scheduled to graduate in February. We have upcoming classes. We have three upcoming classes. I do want to mention, because we, this, we just, we exhausted the list this past year, so this new year, of the list of about 300, 300 folk, we have two large classes that will be starting very soon, one starting in January with 60 persons, and we're projecting them to graduate in September '24. We also have an EMT class looking, projected to start in March, with a class of 20, 25 to 30. We're looking for those particular persons to graduate between September and October of 2024. And then, we also have an EMT firefighter recruit class scheduled to start between April and May, really depending on how quickly they're going through the modules, with another class of 60, and they're projected to graduate in January of 2025. So, in looking at our vacancy rate, I want to start from the bottom and then work our way up. So, in October through December of 2022, we have a vacancy rate of eight. From October through December '23, in our fire suppression, we have a vacancy rate of 10%. We have, you know, we understand that we have service members who are retiring. We also understand that we have service members who are finding that they can go to other jurisdictions, who are offering higher pay and less work, to be very, to be honest. So, with that being said, we do understand that there is a higher vacancy rate, also understanding that we have exhausted the list that we were currently working with, so now, hence the reason why we have a new list that is coming out, so that we can bring on additional personnel. For EMS, which is a higher vacancy rate, from October through December of 2022, we had 18%. Now, we have, from October, October through December of 2023, we have a higher vacancy rate of 27%. With that being said, is we, we have other municipalities who just have started their own EMS divisions, in which they are being paid a comparable rate, but their work level is about one-third. We have a very high, a very high rate of, or personnel's going out and hitting the street, but if they can go to another jurisdiction, of course, they're, they're working much less. So, it is, it is a chance for some of our service members to actually leave Baltimore City and go to other jurisdictions. With that being said, and because we do understand that the vacancy rate is increasing, we have worked with this body to make sure, to incorporate a retention and also a sign-on bonus of $10,000. So, that is went into effect, and we have service members who are signing the agreements so that they would stay in the city of Baltimore, and also, we are continuing with an ongoing list of paramedics and also EMTs so that they can join the ranks of the Baltimore City
Any questions? Good afternoon. Christopher Case, Assistant Chief, Support Services, Community Risk Reduction. I'd like to introduce some people I have working with me. First, Director Dr. Shante Hart, Information, Technology and Planning. Director Tanya Reddick, Director of our 911 system. Deputy Chief Sean Eames, he's our Fire Marshal. And Deputy Chief Jason Goodwin, he's our Logistics Chief. To go over the apparatus situation at the current time, I'm gonna have Chief Goodwin do that.
Chief Goodwin, Deputy Chief Logistics. Just to give you a snapshot of what we have on order, currently, we have 39 heavy apparatus. They're listed here. The heavy apparatus is consistent of engines, ladder trucks, and medic units, and then we also have some smaller vehicles, including the 15 hybrid SUVs and two fully-electric vehicles. Next year, we're looking at taking in, I know the numbers are everywhere, but it's five ladder trucks, six engines, and 20 medic units we should be getting in, in the calendar year of 2024. Let me go to the next one, please. And then, to highlight the electric vehicles, we've had 15 of the hybrid SUVs on order, two fully-electric vehicles. One of those is gonna be our facilities maintenance van, and then the other one is the F-150 Lightning that we're gonna put at OEM. We're just trying to incorporate them in, but we can't go too much farther because of the infrastructure needs on the fully-electric.
Those F-150s are nice. I just want to say. I had a chance to drive one. It's really nice.
Yes, sir. And that's everything for apparatus in a nutshell.
Okay. For station construction renovation, we received $10 million last year from the state of Maryland to renovate or rebuild two fire stations. Specifically, the money was given for Engine 14, 1908 Holland Street, and Engine 27 at 4315 Minnesota Avenue. Both of them are in the design phase at this time. Engine 14 will be a full renovation. I'll go into the renovation in a minute or two, and then, it's our intent for having Engine 27 be a full rebuild. And last year, we were given $25 million from ESPP funding for station renovation, specifically station renovations, many stations that we can, we can get out of it. And the station renovations include lead and mold abatement, gender-neutral bathrooms, individual sleeping quarters, and the continuance of our cancer, our very aggressive cancer reduction program that we've been implementing for the past few years. So, right now, Engine 8 at 800 Light Street is approximately 50%, 50% complete. That's in the renovation stage right now. And Engine 52, Woodbrook Avenue in Endowment Neighborhood, is in the design phase. Then, we also have probably, we're gonna try to get at least 10 more stations out of that right now, but the, our biggest problems is getting the, everybody, the contractors, basically. So, that's, that's where all that stands right now.
Quick question, Chief Casey. Do we have an assessment of all of the fire stations at the moment?
The ones that we intend?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Just on this, Engine 31 received a $500,000 grant from the state a couple of years ago, and I don't know where that...
We're working with DGS on that right now. Getting ready to. We identified, there's been a change in the captain up there, so we're working with the new captain, and we've already identified pretty much what we're gonna do up there, modernize some things, more, more green HVAC systems, things like that.
So, it's in design phase, or you're not even there yet?
It's in the planning phase. It's, there's not, I don't, I'm not anticipating an extent of design phase. It's gonna be just...
Right. I mean, 500,000, sure.
Small things, based on things we've already done on the other stations. So, it's not gonna be a six-month design phase. It's gonna be, let's just go up there and do the work.
So, you anticipate by the end of '24 that that will be done?
I anticipate by the middle of '24.
Okay, that's great. Okay. Thanks a lot.
Good afternoon, everyone. As of year-to-date, the Baltimore City 911 has handled over 1 million calls. As you can see, as Chief Wallace discussed earlier, how many calls we handled between November and October, which kind of gives us approximately 1.2 million for the year. It stands currently, we stand as one of the busiest 911 centers in the state of Maryland, and we're actually kind of, like, like, I would say, almost similar to DC. DC, I think they're at 1.6 million this year. So, if you think about it, between DC and Baltimore, 1.2, 1.6. So, we're almost there. Despite facing the challenges such as staffing shortages and prolonged, like, emergency protocols, 81% of the calls were answered within 15 seconds. And to address these issues and enhance the response times, the 911 Center has recruited eight new operators, with an additional six expected to join January of 2024. And to maintain the staffing levels and foster diversity, continuous recruitment efforts are now underway at 911, which has been open continuously by DHR since, I would say, like, two months ago. So, now, we have continuous hiring within 911. In addition to the 911 diversion, Make-A-War, the 911 system is undergoing a significant upgrade in January 2024. This, in, this upgrade aims to enhance the call handling processing by introducing a more robust system. Notable improvements includes more efficient mapping for better location accuracy, the capacity to handle video pictures and larger files. The upgraded system also features remote 911 stations, providing flexibility for relocation when necessary. This upgrades also in line with the launch of our ESI NET system in May of 2024, making the city the 23rd county in Maryland to transition to next-gen 911. And the ESI NET system operates on an IP-based network, amplifying the capabilities of public safety answering point. It supports the processing of imagery, large files, and improves overall data and information management, also while ensuring a more secure network and environment. So, that's all that's going on in 911 for this quarter. Thank you.
So, the Fire Communications Dispatch Center's performance is measured in accordance with NFPA standards. And per those standards, dispatchers have to have 64 seconds to dispatch an emergency call with a 90% rate of accuracy. There's also 106 seconds with a 95% accuracy rate. So, right now, we're performing below the 60-second standard by operating at about 88%, at just about 88%. We have met the 106-second standard by operating at 96%. And taking a look at our percentages and where we fell a little short with the 64 seconds, I'm sorry, with the, with the 64 seconds, we can attribute that to our staffing issues. We, we have a serious staffing situation. So, within this last time, since the last time we were here, we've had five members resign or retire. We, so that gives us quite a few vacancies. With those vacancies, our shifts normally operate at eight on a shift. The bare minimum that we allow is six, and a lot of times, we are below that six, and that's resulting in a lot of overtime. So, you can imagine, in that type of environment, and you're working excessive hours of overtime, it does give a little mental fatigue. We definitely want to keep away from that. We also have one officer who is our Quality Assurance Lieutenant, and she's also the Training Officer. So, that's one person trying, trying to train and make sure that QA is taken care of for that entire bureau. So, what we've done, there are some measures, and we've put some initiatives in place so that we can try to combat those issues and those problems and try to find a way to continuously increase our percentages. And right now, what we have is a new class of dispatchers. We just had eight potential, well, we have eight potential candidates that are going through the preplacement process right now. So, hopefully, that will be, that will be very beneficial to us. We also have seven field personnel. So, we've taken, we've taken personnel from the field, we've trained them, and now, we have them working over as needed in the communications center, and they're working on dispatch. So, their experience that they bring from the field and the knowledge that they bring from the field is beneficial to us, and that's helping with our, with our dispatching, and we're trying to hope that that will increase our percentages. We've also done a lot lately with continuing education. As I stated, we had one lieutenant responsible for quality assurance and training. What we've done is we've taken the battalion chief there, and we've also allowed her to work and partner with that lieutenant, so she can bring her experience and her knowledge and assist with these training classes that we have. So, we've decided that twice a year, the two of them will have joint classes, they'll have classes, and they'll provide continuing that way. We also have them reaching out and having training and discussions one-on-one. So, the Quality Assurance Officer, she will pull each dispatcher's QA report. They'll then use that QA report to sit with each dispatcher, find their shortcomings, work along with them to improve that, and that's done in our task cad environment. We have shift officers now performing training on their shifts so that they're able to touch their entire shift at one time, and they're making sure that they are understanding the current procedures, as well as anything that has changed, just trying to push in any direction where they may see their shift falling short. We also have now the officer liaisons. So, we have officers from the field who also go to communications and assist there, and their knowledge is invaluable to us, because they are able to provide situational awareness, as well as, it's just a matter of if they've experienced things in the field and they know how it is in the field as an officer, they're able to assist those dispatchers in that center, to get them to understand what's needed, what's required, and help, help them to manage the incident from the communications center a little better than what we've been doing. I believe that, that's all. Any questions?
Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief Sean Eames. The Office of the Fire Marshal is responsible for providing fire prevention, fire investigation, and educational resources. In the bullet-to items, you will find a brief summary of the primary functions performed by our office. In quarter three of this year, we performed 2,576 fire inspections, 504 plan reviews, 26 fire safety talks and fire drills, as well as 135 fire investigations. In order to improve the information sharing between our Fire Investigation Unit and Police Arson, the Fire Investigation Unit will be relocating to the, to the Police Department Headquarters in mid-January. In 2023, there's been an increase in the total number of arson cases closed, from 69 in 2022 to 95 this year. Additionally, to improve our fire inspection delivery time, we have four fire inspectors working remotely in various areas in the city. We have an inspector assigned to the northeast section of the city, northwest, southeast, and in the southern part of the city. And that's all. And that's all.
Good afternoon. Carl Knight, Deputy Chief, Office of Safety and Risk Management. So this is the injury, for line-of-duty injuries on fire grounds for the third quarter. As you can see, we had a total of 17 total injuries for this quarter, and this is the breakdown of them. Next slide is the number of injuries by quarter. As you see, we had eight in vacant dwellings, two in undetermined or other. Those were actually two injuries that occurred on the fire ground, but the members were actually outside of the dwellings, and then the seven were occupied. And then the third is the number of vehicle collisions. As you see, in the third quarter, we actually, so second quarter, we had 92 total vehicle collisions. We're down to 84 in the third quarter. So in addition, so from the report, as you were talking about earlier, from the report from Strick Street from last year, one of the recommendations was that we had an additional safety officer put in service. Actually, yesterday was the one year that the second safety officer was put in service, and these were their response totals. So as you can see, in one year, the Safety Officer 2 was the primary safety officer, which we previously had in service. Safety Officer 4 was the additional unit that was put in service. So from 12/19/22 to 12/19/23, it was 1,571 for Safety Officer 2. That additional unit did additional 1,772 responses, for a total of 3,290 responses in one year by the two units.
Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief John Ide. I'm the shift commander for A-Shift. I'll be speaking on behalf of Operations. Mr. Chairman and Arrested Committee, thank you for having me speak on this topic. My presentation will consist of the activities, response matrix, and ongoing initiatives for the third quarter for fire operations. When I speak of suppression units and what the shift commander's office is responsible for, 32 engines, 17 trucks, three squads, one rescue, seven specialty units, and six battalion chiefs, that's daily staffing. Suppression units not only respond to incidents, they also do daily activities, which is shown on this slide here. I'm just going to briefly go through what our daily activities for our suppression units are. Monday, we do hydrant inspections. We actually physically touch hydrants, one hydrant every six months. So we cover entire district, for the inspection district, for the companies themselves. Building inspections on Tuesdays. We do the unsafe vacant survey and test sweeps on Wednesdays. Thursdays, again, building inspections. Fridays are make-up day for inclement weather. Saturdays, we're doing safety sweeps and installing smoke detectors. And then Sundays, we have pumping, driving, and battalion training. Each of those activities, we require units to do two hours and document that in fire records, and you'll see in future slides how those numbers calculate for the department. In addition to the activities that I'm showing on this slide, there's additional things that have come about this year where we have our units actually going out to the Fire Academy and doing training daily. And I'm just going to overview those. On Monday, we have six units participate in two-in-one training that are out of service. They're topics related to all aspects of the job and basically professional development. On Tuesdays, we have a Fire Officers' Command and Simulation Lab, which is called Focus Lab. We send three of our incident commanders out to the Fire Academy, and they do a visual and audio scenario-based practice with benchmarks that are being met by evaluators. And during those benchmarks, we look at things that are doing good and things that they can improve on. And their takeaway, they can take away that information and improve on any of their deficiencies. For Wednesdays, we do truck training. We send two units out for eight hours, and we go over truck-related force of entry, search and rescue. And finally, on Fridays, we send four units out for bailout training to the academy. As you know, we recently had bailout training equipment provided to our firefighters to allow them to self-rescue. So we have ongoing initial training and refresher training. Next slide. So these activities, as a department, I'm just going to highlight a few things on this slide. We've done over 12,000 inspections for the third quarter. We installed 931 smoke alarms and have conducted approximately 8,800 smoke detector inspections, and also identified 561 CODX rays. Our units, you can see, not only do the responses, but they are extremely busy. There's not a lot of downtime in their 24-hour period with doing the daily activities, the training, and the responses. Next slide. I'm going to go over some call volume. Our actual incidences have went up just slightly in the third quarter. Our average is about, our suppression units do approximately 3,000 calls for service a month. Next slide. Fire incident dispositions. This is actual fires on the left, which says AF. Box alarms are what our units have been dispatched for the third quarter. That's a full assignment for a reported house or building fire. And then we've had working fire and the multi-alarm. So those are where it goes above a 30-minute timeframe for the working fire for units to be on the scene. Next slide. Our response time to all call types, that's both fire and EMS. We've been pretty consistent through all quarters here, five minutes. And this also supports EMS. When their units are tied off for the offload times, we do have a unit there within the time of dispatch till they arrive on the scene within a five-minute period. Next slide. So the next slide is showing response times for those units. And again, the bar graph on the left is showing response in the thousands, and the bottom number is showing how many minutes it actually takes us to get to, the first engine to get to the actual incident. Next slide, please. This is actually suppression units responding to EMS call types. Again, it goes to show our support. The suppression units are supporting EMS when it does take them longer due to high call volumes or they are stuck at the hospital for offload times that we're getting there within the four-to-six-minute mark from the time of dispatch. Next is turnout times. This is strictly from the time the call is dispatched till the actual incident, till the unit actually hits and route going to the incident. Next. Fire incidents in structures. This is broken down by district. District 9 had the most, had 18 structure fires for this quarter. District number 12 had 17, and District 7 had 16. And it also breaks down the occupancy of each of the structures. Next slide, please. This is suppression units' response to all incidences, both EMS and fire, with the respective district. Again, District 11 had over 6,000 calls for service. District 12, 4,400 calls for service. And District 10, 4,071 calls for service, and that's in the third quarter. And finally, I just want to go over a couple of initiatives that are ongoing and new to the third quarter for suppression units. Chief Wallace implemented a program which is being received very well in the field. We're having the probationary firefighters come out and ride as the fifth person, and it's an invaluable tool to help get our members prepared for what they need to do while being mentored. So I think that's one of the new initiatives that's going to really benefit our department in the future. We've obtained RIT bags, which, as you know, rapid intervention bags are bags that are used to facilitate the rescue of fallen firefighter inside of a dwelling and their removal. They've been placed on every engine now, as opposed to before, we only had them on the trucks. So every unit has the ability to use those RIT bags now. They're readily available on the scene. And also, it improves their frequency of training since it's actually part of their equipment cache. Accountability command boards. I'm not sure if you've seen them. All of our incident commanders are using accountability command boards on the incident scene along with their fire tech. And it allows for them not only to account for the people that are actually on the scene, but where they are inside the building, incident priorities, and then they can do a very quick flip over to our mayday checkoff sheet in case there was an incident where a firefighter summons to have a mayday, and then they would go through the checkoff sheet on there. So that just gives us some standard incident command systems throughout the entire department and accountability for our people. We had SEAQ thermal imaging cameras assigned to each member of our department that are riding on the unit. So it's, the SEAQ cameras are thermal imaging cameras that allow just to see through low visibility. So they allow for each member to have one attached to themselves while they're going at low visibility, can quickly identify any trapped victims, hidden fires, and also self-rescue if they become disoriented with the low visibility. It allows them to see the entire scene and what they're looking at and how to get back out. So big benefit, again, for personal safety for our members. In closing, our members do a lot of inspections, a lot of training, and do a high volume. They're doing a lot of high-volume calls, and they're getting out in the amount of time that it takes. And that supports our ISO 1 rating, which, as most of us know, benefits the city by lowering the household insurance and things of that matter. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Chief Wallace, anyone else, or are we? I'll open up to questions. I have, actually, I'll let you go first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick math would tell us that in Quarter 3, there were 79 structural fires of occupied properties, 37 structural fires of vacant properties, which is about 46%, 47% of the properties that are structural fires were vacant properties. So if I'm trying to find the slides from last time, I think that's an increase in terms of the number of vacancies. And this leads to my question on slide. So first of all, I appreciate that data because that helps us with furthering the advocacy for addressing vacant and abandoned properties when half of your calls or half of your structural fires are vacant properties. So we're keeping the firefighters super busy but in a very dangerous situation. The other slide related to that is the number of line-of-duty injuries by quarter. There's no numbers on the slide, but you know which one I'm talking about. And it has, I know from quarter, the last quarter, we saw that almost half of the injuries are vacant properties, and we're seeing that, well, so it's a little bit of the same between Quarter 1 and Quarter 2. But what are the injuries that we're seeing? And is it injuries that are the fact that it's a vacant property or just injuries because we just have a lot of calls? Sure, sure.
Yes, ma'am. So those injuries that we're seeing in the vacant dwellings, we're seeing of those, there were two that were overexertions, as we talked about before.
Last time.
Overexertions are those sprains and strains. We actually did have two burns. One was during, a member was burned during structural suppression operations. They were inside the dwelling actually during structural suppression operations. The second burn was, the member was actually walking up to, put on his gear, to go into full fire suppression, and actually, some hot tar fell off of the roof and ended up burning him. We did have one that was a dehydration. The member was dehydrated from, after he came out of the fire. And we did have one who fell through a floor. There was a hole in the floor, and he fell through the floor. So it's a little bit of everything. There's no one common theme for them. I can't say that it was, as you said, they were different types of injuries, so I can't say that they were because they were vacant or not.
Other than the floor one.
Correct.
You usually don't fall through the floor if it's not, yeah?
Yes.
That's helpful, and I'll keep asking those. If you want to just have the list next time, that's fine, too. But I think that there's two factors, just as you said. One is we're getting more injuries because we're getting more, we're getting calls, and half of the calls, almost half of the calls are vacant property calls, excuse me, incidents. Getting lots more calls, the incidents. And then the fact that we're out there, there's just more of a chance that there's going to be an injury, I think, is what I'm kind of getting at. So I really appreciate this because I will continue to keep my spreadsheet to make those comparisons because, again, that helps us, I mean, and Chief Wallace knows, like everything I get, every notification, I'm like, oh, let me check if it's a vacant property. And because we have to resolve this issue. We absolutely do. And it would also help us to look at, and your map is helpful, because then we can also say, well, maybe this is where we need to concentrate the work because there are the concentration of vacant properties here, and we're putting a lot of lives, not just our lives of the firefighters, but also the residents around, in jeopardy by continuing to have these vacant properties in the area. So I'm grateful for having this data, and we'll just keep utilizing it to the best of our ability to make sure that we're advocating strongly to address this issue. It's huge. It's huge. We're seeing it. Almost half the incidents are the structural fires are vacant properties. That's insane. That's crazy. And we're getting, you know, higher risk. I mean, you all are taking more precautions because you're seeing it, although I saw in the chart that most of those weren't documented CODX rays. So you didn't necessarily know from just looking at it, which is probably why the firefighter was in that one house. But still, I mean, it's just an important fact for us that we're keeping you all busy unnecessarily because we could actually be solving the problem instead. So, thanks.
So two things. One, that data, yes, we absolutely do keep that data. So that is, you keep asking, I'll keep having an answer for you. As far as the injuries go, all of them were minor in nature. Of the seven that were injured and are vacant, only two of them are still off duty now. So they were, they're averaging like five or six days off, so they are minor in nature injuries. But the other thing you just said, that they, looking at that slide, none of those, none of these injuries were a result from a vacant that was a CODX?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. I thought I heard you.
Yeah, no, that's what I said, because they were vacant. And so either they, you just hadn't gotten to that part of the city yet where you were doing the CODX, or it was a property that didn't, you were there, the fire department had inspected it already but didn't think it was as dangerous, right? But I would contend, because I've shared this with the chief, and I know he shared it to everybody else, that when you, you know, look at code map and you see those, the program code map where you see those diamonds which are not the same CODX diamonds, you know, a vacant property is a vacant property, and it's going to be dangerous, period. And so, again, that's, I guess that's a question is whether or not you were, I think you did CODX in some of those areas already. So it just may have been that it didn't look like it was, you know, uncompromised from the outside. But a vacant property is always compromised, period. End of story.
Yes. Now, I can say also that one of those dwellings was a CODX after the injury. So it was a vacant prior to, but after the fire, because of the extent of the fire, it became, it was added to the CODX ray list the following day.
I would imagine that all of them will be added to the CODX list because they've been more so compromised.
After a fire.
Yeah.
To remember Ramus' point, I think it might be worth sort of tweaking our language here and maybe differentiating between vacant and abandoned or something about the condition.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. They do have on this chart, there's vacant, there's unoccupied, which is the same language that we use for the DHCD. So if it's unoccupied, it's not going to get a vacant dwelling unit designation.
Got it.
Yeah. So they do differentiate between the two here.
I would just add to Councilwoman Ramus' point. We're, right after the first of the year, we're going to be having a large meeting with DHCD. We're trying to put together now. One thing that I'm seeing is, especially on DHCD's code map, there may be indications where homes are vacant because of the lack of UNO permit, but that the occupants may be in there. And that in of itself is a challenge to us because while we can refer to what we have as CAD data, and that data may transfer from DHCD's platform into our CAD, we rely heavily on the assessment of our crews when they get there. You know, naturally, a CODX, CODX is what it is. We know that right up front. Even though we're seeing what we believe to be accurate data on the way into an incident scene, there is still an assessment phase that has to occur early on. scene, there is still an assessment phase that has to occur early on.
You have to do it, absolutely.
They absolutely have to do that. And there will be in the future examples of where there was occupancy in a residence where the UNO had not been given. And that's something that we, we have to be very, very cognizant of because it could, it could very easily be a situation where there's a family in that dwelling. Maybe they don't belong there, but it's a fully furnished dwelling. You know, it's vacant in a sense, but to us, it's not vacant. That's an occupied dwelling. So that's the challenge that our company officers and our battalion chiefs currently have. We're going to attempt to try to do some clarification and streamlining with that, but I, you know, I want to make sure, you know, I get that in here, that it's a continued work in progress.
No, we, we're clear that that is an issue. I mean, I've done an inventory of the vacancies in my district, and I can go to the house and go, oh, look, it's pearly, it's fully rehabbed. And it's because some of these people are not getting proper permits or they didn't complete the process. So it's about 10% of the vacancies in my district. That's actually a pretty high percentage. And it's disturbing. It's also disturbing for the family who just bought that house, not knowing that they had a vacant building notice on it, because now they're stuck with having to do all of the work to get that, you know, in place. Or they thought they had a fully rehabbed house, and now they have a furnace that's not going to work. And it's a huge issue. We actually passed a law preventing that from happening. It was my bill. But the issue ended up being that the, because it was that you, as a seller, you had to disclose that there was a vacant building notice on it. And a lot of them still aren't doing that because they've skirted the process in not going to get permits. And so I absolutely agree, you have to do an assessment when you're there because if there's somebody in that building, you've got to go and address it. It's just, it's difficult. It's a difficult situation because we certainly want to address that issue, too. Part of it is that people still believe that the permit office isn't any good, and so they're just going to go right around the process. We're working on it. There are improvements to make, no question. But I, it's been a frustrating process. So I'm agreeing with you in that there's lots of issues with what exactly you're saying with that particular factor, and it's something in addition that we're trying to address.
Yeah, and I would say it's not, at least from an agency perspective, in my opinion, it's not an assignment of blame anywhere. What it has done for us, because we've been able to go kind of granular with data, is it's helped us with training design and officer development. And we really, really emphasize that 360-degree survey. We really emphasize that rooftop survey, really get a look at this, you know, this situation, the structure, fire behavior, fire advancement when we arrive. So it's, I've said it before, our incident commanders, they operate in a space that we call uncertainty, and this is just a contributing factor there, just to clarify that.
I will point blame at some of these people who are just not getting permits, and they want to skirt the law. I absolutely will point the blame on them, and we're going to find them. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to turn it over to Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question on, what are we doing in communication? I do appreciate you guys when we have fires in our respective districts. You know, you guys tag us on social media, which is cool. But I know at one point in time, I was getting them via text message or maybe a phone call, I think like in real time. I think it's helpful to me as a councilperson because what I'll do is I'll get that information a little, it may be delayed, but constituents are calling me, asking me, do I know about anything? At times, I just don't know. So I do know I was getting them in the past, and I would like, you know, if you guys can kind of bring that back to the council members. My second question is, what is like the time, and actually, how many fire marshals do we have, like, working in your office? I do get a lot of calls of folks that say they may have completed what was asked of them, false repairs, and they're not getting, like, no one to come out till, like, six, seven months later. Is it, is it like that, or are they exaggerating? Or do we have enough, like?
So I don't know about the part about the six months later. We have 20 inspectors that are doing, like, general use inspections and plan review and fire protection. We have four people. So that's really like our backup. So it depends on which type of inspection you're working.
Well, nearly like occupancy permit season.
So we have plenty of people. There's absolutely no, there's absolutely no backlog in that area.
Okay.
At all. So what people do, they don't go through the right channel, they don't go through the 3-1-1 center. Like, there's a certain path that you need to take with that.
Okay, and that path is going through 3-1-1?
Yes, it is, yes, sir.
Okay. And usually, when you guys do the inspection and the occupant decides to do repairs on the property, how long does it take for you guys to come out to?
We have enough people to get, if they call 3-1-1, we're generally out there within 10 days.
10 days?
Yeah, that's what the policy is.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chief Wallace, I have one question for you, and I expect that for this, we can probably close out the meeting. You know, this is our last meeting for the end of the year, and next time I see you, it'll be 2024, hopefully. And so, you know, just really thinking about what we should be prioritizing. I'm curious for you, what is your highest priority going into the next year, and how can we help?
Without a doubt, staffing is the highest priority. We are, we're actually meeting with external contractors right now to help take over or at least assume a primary role with regard to recruitment, the application phase, as well as some of the phases along the way with regard to onboarding members. We know internally, and I think that Chief Tosh and Chief Shiloh have done a really good job working internally to try to compress the amount of time in the Fire Academy. But we have to be extremely cautious with doing that, okay? We, you know, that's a very sensitive subject when it comes to training. My hope is, what we're doing right now with this pilot program with the ride-alongs can maybe replace some of the time that's spent in the Fire Academy refining skills that are unique to the city of Baltimore. Because there are skills, no matter where you go in this country, that are very unique to the jurisdiction at which it's providing the service. So that in of itself, if we can somehow pull some things out and embed this ride-along period, that's going to be huge, but we do want to compress that. I also want to compress the front end of this, the amount of time, the amount of time it takes from the day someone files an application to become a member of this department to the day they walk onto the Fire Academy grounds. We are working with DHR, but we also are very interested in a contractor who can help us do just that. So staffing, without a doubt, is my number-one priority. You know, equipment is always a moving target. We, we've, this is my second hearing where we've spoken about equipment, but I know it's been spoken about prior to me. As the supply chain stabilizes a little bit, we think we'll be in a better position. However, a slide that either Chief Case or Chief Goodman would have spoken about shows what we have in queue, that we're expecting to be delivered over, you know, the upcoming, the upcoming years. So, you know, that in of itself, we can't control, but it's something that I feel is likely to stabilize itself. If we can compress our time factor, bringing people in and getting them, getting them in the street, we can be more competitive. But right now, it's such a long process that those who submit applications here, they submit here, but they want to work in this career field, and we are not the only game in town. We have to become competitive, and one of the ways I think we can do so is pulling people off that list right away. In a perfect world with this contractor, that list will update itself quarterly. Where we're at now, you were given a number, I think it was around 356 that we think we're going to have on a list, but in a two-year list, that's going to be gone in a year. And we're going to be right back to either we're going to have to wait and hold another test, or we're going to have to, you know, rush and try to have one. In years past, 3,000, 4,000 people on our list was common practice. Now we're getting around 1,000. So recognizing that, we have got to position ourselves to become more competitive. And we are, we are running parallel efforts right now internally to shorten, externally to bring a contractor in to help us do so as well.
Second part of that question was, how can we help?
I think at this point, you know, we're doing everything we can as an agency right now, and I think that, again, not being able to control that supply chain is something that, you know, maybe as a city, we can be more vocal about, right? We, there's not a lot we can do as a fire department in that industry because we compete with other fire departments. If FDNY is coming in with an order of 30 pumpers and Chief Case puts in an order of two, you know, you can see where we're at with some of that. I think that, you know, our position, we just need to take a stronger position on that particular component of it. With regard to the staffing and the contractor, DHR is extremely supportive with this. They really, really welcome our efforts to do so. Financially, on the backend, there may need to be assistance with that because there are testing fees that, as a department, I want to absorb specifically for city residents. It could be around a $65 fee just to take a test, right? So we're going to want to absorb that. But I think in the short term, they would be my asks, but I would also respectfully ask that we be given an opportunity to maybe get back with you on that, maybe strategize with my finance team and some other people in the department and really identify where those needs are.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, we are not just a committee here to hold you accountable. We will, of course, do that, but we're also looking to help you problem-solve. So as you're thinking through your problems and your solutions, always think about how we can be helpful. And I assure you, certainly for myself and for my colleagues here, we're always looking for ways to do that. With that, I don't think we have anything else.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I just need to correct my math. I got my math wrong. Just on the, for the record, it's not exactly half that of the structural fires that were vacant. It's more like 30, 35%. So I'm just correcting my math. Sorry about that. It's still a big deal. It's still a really big deal.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Hopefully, you get some time with your family and get to enjoy going into the new year. So thank you, and this hearing is in recess.